I will call this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the City of Albany of Wednesday, December 11th, 2024 to order. And I will start with the city, with the land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of LaShawn, acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands, and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Yaloni tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe, together build a better future for all that now make this their home. And with that, we can move on to the roll call.
Yes, excuse me. Commissioner Wadi is absent. Commissioner Moment?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pilch?
President.
And Chair McLeod.
Here. And our next item is item three, ex parte communications. Have there been any? No, seeing none. I had a brief conversation with the applicant. I think it was, let's see, which one? On Pomona, just a brief friendly chat about story polls, but nothing of substance, so that's all. And with that, we will move on to item four, consent calendar. And there are three items, meeting minutes, planning application 24-031, 830 Pomona Avenue, and item 43, planning application 24-036-1054 Masonic Avenue. If there are any members that would like to pull any of these items from the consent calendar, yes?
I'd like to pull the two applications, 42 and 43.
Okay. Anything else? It only leaves the minutes. Okay, so we can go ahead and vote on the minutes? Do you have a motion to?
I move we approve the minutes, meeting minutes of October 9th, 2024.
Commissioner Pilch?
Yes.
Moment?
Yes.
Yes, so we've approved the minutes, and so is, what's your interest in the two items? Do you have a full presentation, or are we just?
I think, I can, well, I can just state my interest. It's pretty simple. In both instances, I noted that we have some fairly blank walls on the side elevations. And, let's see, I need to get my head around the, in one of the cases, they were adding a bedroom to that lower floor without adding any windows. And so I wondered if the, my other commissioners, my fellow commissioners had any concerns about that. Was it, oh dear, I hope maybe it was just that one application. Give me a moment to look. Definitely 1054 is the addition of the bedroom to the, to the other, to the currently unutilized space, correct?
Correct. May I recommend that since they've been pulled from the consent calendar, that we go through them one by one?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, staff report.
Will be brief.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Take too long.
Okay, if you have a, if you, I'm sorry, I was going to launch in right with my comments, but Chair?
Yeah, why don't we do the staff report, start with Pomona, and then move on to Masonic?
Ah, okay, got it.
So we'll start with the project application for use permit and design review for 830 Pomona Avenue. So that's the project location. It's west of, on the west side of Pomona Avenue, and with Solano Avenue to the south. This is a subterranean property viewed from the street. So the project request is basically use permit and design review as it's constructing a new 844 square foot second story addition. The reason that it requires a use permit is to vertically extend an existing non-conforming two-foot-five-and-a-half-inch right north side yard setback for the second story addition, where a four-foot setback is required, and of course, design review for the proposed structure. This is the, the project from the site, from site plan view. And so that I highlighted in green, the existing non-conforming setback which would be continued on to, on the second story addition. These are the existing elevations of the home, as you could see from street view. And these are the proposed elevations. So as you can see, that's, you know, there's a little bit of demolition on the first floor for the roof, and then in order to accommodate the second story addition. As you can see as well, the project proposes to continue the same architectural language as the existing one, and it's using a variety of high-quality materials as well. Let's see, so yeah, here are, I have no idea what happened with that green line, but, so yeah, this is a snapshot of the materials and colors that are proposed. So there was a little bit of conversation about windows at the beginning of the project, but yeah, these windows would be not vinyl. It would be, I believe it's fiberglass clad, or aluminum clad, which both are acceptable. So yeah, since this is a project that exceeds 45% FAR, this is subject to exceptional design per our design guidelines. And so this, as I said, proposed design treatments include materials and colors to match the existing home, facade articulation by setting the second story back, new fiberglass clad recessed windows, and new plantings at the front and rear yards, which would, which would enhance the property as well. So far, staff has not received any correspondences in regards to the project proposal, and staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission review and approve the proposed project, subject to the findings and conditions of approval that have already been drafted by staff. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? Wouldn't mind just speaking to us for a few minutes, just present your project?
Could you pull up the elevations again, the apartment elevations? That'd be great. Thank you. So yeah, just to kind of answer your question, Commissioner Pilch, the second, basically, the existing north elevation is into the required setback, not only for Planning Department, but also for the Building Department and for fire rating. And so the windows that are already there are kind of grandfathered in on the ground floor, but we can't be adding new windows on the second floor along that elevation. And, you know, really, because we're close to the neighbor's property as well, on that side, we really didn't want to, you know, I mean, we could spend a bunch of money and do one-hour rated fixed windows on that side, but then we would basically be compromising the privacy, we thought, of that neighbor there. And so on the other side of the house, which has a much larger setback at the driveway, plenty of windows there, windows in the front, windows in the back, and then did what we could to articulate it by basically making the second floor a different but complementary material. So you get the lap siding there. It's like, you know, it's a different color, but we think, again, a complementary color, and then really playing with the details and the slope of the roof, et cetera, to make sure it's as complementary to the kind of craftsman bungalow style of the, of the existing house. And we kept the, the ceiling height at the plates, a little, around eight feet, a little over eight feet around the perimeter, so we're not making it extra big. And the slope of the roof is five and 12, which is usually what you'd go for, for a craftsman house. Anything lower than that tends to start to, to feel a little bit flat. But, but yeah, we did, did what we could, but we were working with that, that setback situation there on that side.
Well, appreciate you articulating all that. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
So the, the setback, actual distance of the property line is less than three feet?
Yeah, it's like two and a half.
That's a very restrictive fire zone. Yeah, so that's the explanation for that, which, yeah, and I don't think it's worth spending a lot of money on one-hour windows either. They're very, very expensive. Okay, shall we, any other public comment about this project?
So if you would like to speak on this project, either walk up to the Diaz or use the raise the hand icon?
Yep. Okay, we'll close public comment, move to commissioner discussion. Any discussion? Or can we just?
Oh, I should have asked a question of the applicant, if you don't mind. Are those skylights or solar tubes indicated on the roof?
Yes, those are solar tubes and a skylight.
Okay, thank you.
That's, again, we can't have windows, and we can't have any skylights within four feet of the property line, so we, just trying to get some natural light in on that second floor along that side.
Appreciate that, yeah. Yeah, so that was, coming back to the commission, that was my concern, the lack of both articulation in the, in that blank wall, although they are providing different siding material, and the lack of natural light, you know, which means you need to power artificial light inside those rooms. So I did not realize we had the setback issue here. So that's all I had. I wanted to see if the other commissioners had anything else to add about that, the second story wall.
Do you have comments?
No, I'm totally agreeing to the applicant's reasoning, you know, whatever they have done is perfectly all right, and they have taken care of, you know, breaking the facade in different articulation. So that, you know, has some impact, positive impact, and, you know, all the rooms that we have there, you know, don't really require any window. And since we don't have a setback that complies with fire regulation, there is no need to go and spend money and have a fire-rated window there. So I'm, you know, I'm totally okay with the project as designed, and I support it.
Sounds good. Yeah, I like the project. I think you've done a nice job with the north side, given the constraints, and the sun tubes do let in a lot of light. They do quite a lot.
Yes.
Surprising sometimes, how much light they let in.
I have a few of my own.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the rest of the project looks attractively designed, it's a nice blend of new and old, and I think it'll fit in nicely in the neighborhood, so. You have a motion?
Yeah, the rest of the project, I agree, is perfectly fine. I just had that one comment. So I will move the planning application, move approval of the planning application 24-031, 830 Pomona Avenue.
Can I have a second there?
Vote?
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
And all vote yes, too, so that's been approved. Item 4-2, planning application 24-031.
Thanks for coming.
Pomona Avenue. And if there are story polls, they should stay up for 14 more days, I believe. It would be the end of the appeal period, although, was there some question about appeal periods for this end of year?
Oh, thank you, yes. Thank you for mentioning it. The appeal period does end on December 26th. So although our offices are closed on this end, if you want, if anyone wants to drop off an appeal in person, they can drop it off at the police department offices, which are just next door, and/or, as per always, either email or snail mail, something that is date stamped by December 26th.
Yeah, I don't anticipate there'll be any appeal for your project, though, so, but it is a technicality we need to know.
Thank you for.
Okay, let's move on to item 4-3, 1054 Masonic.
Yes, I did not prepare a, a presentation, but this is planning application 24-036 for 1054 Masonic, and it's a design review request to convert approximately 435 square, to convert approximately 435 square feet of what was non-habitable space on the ground level of an existing two-story home to living area consisting of a bathroom, bedroom, bonus room, and laundry room, which is next to the ground floor garage. Just a little background, it's a 25 square, 500 square foot lot located on the west side of Masonic Avenue between Marin Avenue to the north and Dartmouth Street to the south. The BART tracks and Aloney Greenway front the property to the east. The lot is developed with a two-story, single-family home with an approximately 660 square foot footprint, constructed in 1927. The home did consist of a bedroom, a living room, and kitchen on the top floor, and a garage, workshop, and crawl space area on the ground level. So the property did recently undergo a complete renovation, including construction of a new interior stairway from the main to the ground level. An approval is being sought for the conversion of the 435 feet of ground floor level two habitable space, which does require design review for an alteration over 400 square feet. I do have the plan set up. So you, there were concerns. So first of all, I do want to mention that it is a very small lot and a very small footprint. There were no exterior additions to the home that were made. It was, this is the proposed layout, which has a very small bedroom that does have a egress window at the rear, as well as that bonus room which has the door. So no, as you're correct, no new windows were added to this, to the plans.
Sorry, can you point to the egress window again?
Yep, hold on. Right here.
I got it, thank you.
Yeah. So you are correct, no new windows were added, and staff did not evaluate this, but does believe that these are very small rooms, and that the existing openings, in terms of windows, meet code, as well as will provide sufficient lighting for those rooms. Additionally, as mentioned, this is a small lot with three-foot side yard setbacks, so while they technically can add windows for building code, it is something that, and would add light if they were to. It is a very short distance between the neighboring properties, and, and staff does not feel like that it would be a, either an aesthetic, or because, again, of the small nature of these rooms necessarily really do all that much for the lighting. In this way, it does provide some wall space, which is important as well for rooms, especially a bedroom. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Staff does recommend approval of the project as conditioned. The designer is available online if you'd like her to speak, or if you just want to go into questions.
So, why don't we ask you questions first?
Sure.
Do you have questions for staff?
Is that window existing, or?
Yes. They changed the window out, and I will go to the, whoops, wrong direction. So you can see that the, their existing elevation is to the rear, and the proposed elevation is, is, sorry, existing was on the left, the proposed is on the right. The window did meet ingress in terms of size, and has been retrofitted to literally be egress window as part of the building permit application.
So, just to clarify, they've done the work.
They have done the work.
Done the work, which they shouldn't have done the work.
Correct.
But they did do the work.
Correct.
Trying to bring this into compliance.
Correct.
And once we approve, assuming we approve, then they would still go back and have building inspections, and egress window would be examined by the building inspector, and all?
That is correct, and they've already submitted for their building permits, including fire sprinklers, and they'll have a fire sprinkler system. One thing that you'll see on the cover of the staff report, I just didn't mention this, but the bonus room, this is also just the pre-front facade and the, the post-front facade. And so though we don't condone work being done without prior approval, staff does believe that this is an improvement to the property and provides more livable area and is, is a benefit to the city. But I did want to show you the, excuse me, the front picture, which shows kind of the open stairway that leads to the bonus room on the ground floor. So again, it is a small area, but even with that open kind of stairway, it adds some light from up above, so it doesn't have a very enclosed, kind of claustrophobic feel to it.
Want me to hear from the applicant, or?
It's up to you.
I don't, yeah.
Okay, she's raising her hand, so, okay.
Hi, my name is Jenna Fiducibo. I'm with the applicant. I'm the part of the architecture firm of the project. I apologize for my voice. I am sick, so I'm trying to just be here for, for you guys. But it is extremely hard, actually, to hear the commissioners. Their mic, I don't think, is on. So is there any way for that to be turned on?
I'm sorry, mine was off for a moment.
Okay, great. Yeah, I do hear you now. But yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions if you guys have any concerns or anything about the proposal that she greatly explained.
Well, my, my concern, this is Commissioner Pilch, my concern was the lack of additional windows after adding a bedroom. Staff did point out that there is the, the egress window into the rear, but the rear, the rear of the elevations, I think, at least, yeah, both the left, especially the right, are very blank. And I thought that additional windows could both make those, make those elevations less blank and add natural light to that lower space, so that there didn't need to be as much artificial light in that space. So if you wanted to, that was my concern. Did you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, that's no problem. The developer, property owner, actually, did want to make sure that the architectural windows and details and stuff remained on the property to enhance what was existing, and not to make any major changes to the exterior, minus the color, obviously, you saw the upgrade of that. I think what will help clarify, too, is actually the rear door is fully glassed, and that does pull in some of that light from there. There is a photo of that bonus space that she posted up that does show that come through, if you can see that on the left right there. There is the glare of the sun, indirect sun coming in right there. So that does bring in some more in that stairwell, and that's really small bonus, kind of an entry space from the backyard.
Okay, thank you for that. I have no more questions for the applicant.
Okay, all right, thank you for your statement. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment from the audience or online?
If you'd like to speak on this item, please come up to the Diaz or use the raise the hand icon? Nope, that's all.
And, okay, we'll close public comment, we'll move to commissioner discussion.
Well, I think you, I think you've heard my, my concerns, so I'd love to hear from other commissioners whether they have similar concerns, or whether the light is mitigated by the glass in the back door, the egress, the back egress window, and whether or not that satisfies the other commissioners, or if they also have concerns about the blank, you know, the, the blank elevations, left and right elevations.
I don't, well, I do mean to interrupt. I just want to let you know that someone has raised their hand to speak, so it's, it's at the discretion of the chair whether you want to reopen.
Okay, well, let's open it back up to public comment and hear the person's comment.
Great. So Chelsea, if you're here to speak on 1054 Masonic, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I have a comment about, I have been in the unfinished space, which, I'm a neighbor, and I've been in the unfinished space of the property before the renovation was done. And the ceiling level wasn't quite of the livable space. I don't know if it was six feet or so, and there had been lots of excavation. six feet or so, and there had been lots of excavation done to make the livable space into what we see, um, proposed by the, by the architect, by the project person. And I was concerned about if there, what drainage considerations were taken into, um, consideration, uh, with, with the fact that there was a lot of excavation done to make this livable space. So I wondered if, if the project designer could comment on the drainage expectations, um, in the new bedroom and that space in the basement now. That's all, thanks.
All right, thank you for your comment. Um, well, I guess we could ask the...
Hold on one second, if, I just want to see if anyone else wishes to speak. If anyone else wishes to speak on this item while the public hearing's still open, please raise your hand now. Nope.
No, okay, well, we'll close public comment again, and, uh, is the applicant still online?
Yes.
Um, did you hear the question? We have a question about drainage, it sounds like the floor level was lowered, sounded like probably structural slab work was done, was that part of this project?
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to answer that question to, for Chelsea. Um, when we were brought in on the project, we measured everything that was existing to the characteristics of the house. As of what we knew take coming on of the project, there was no excavation. The only thing that he did note was, um, which is James Compost, the owner, um, he did note that the, um, there was a trench drain at the driveway that they did add for the drainage to come away from the, the foundation, away from the house, to the street, and that was the only thing that they made sure to include, which I'm happy to include that in our, um, conditions if we need to add that or, uh, show that on the permit plans.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think that should be shown on the building permit set, um, and that should be inspected by the building inspector, particularly the drainage, require it to go to the street, not be, um, filtered or left on site, um, because we have soils that don't drain very well. Uh, so that could be a condition of approval, that the drainage plan is shown on the building permit set and inspected by the building inspector. Um, I, you know, it's not, uh, we are not an enforcement body here, we just approve projects that come to us, proposals, so, uh, enforcement and inspection is left to the building department. Um, so any other concerns, or?
No, I, I don't have any comments.
Okay.
Just to add on to what you just said, so staff will take that into consideration when evaluating the, uh, permits, uh, evaluating this application, and that usually is done by, completely by staff. As you mentioned, that is a, a function of building, not design, so not under our purview. Um, so, yeah, but I was, did I, but I did ask staff that same question, because I don't think that was necessarily came up in the application, so it's good, it's good to note because that may have been overlooked.
Yeah, and then looking at the elevations, I do see your point, there are very few windows, especially on what they call the right side, I'm not sure if that's what side that is.
I think the right side is the stairway side, left side is the bedroom side.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of very blank, um, although they didn't change window locations. Um, you know, I guess I'm happy with, uh, the other existing left, proposed left, not bring many windows either, but, you know, with the narrow lot, sometimes it's easier just to not put a lot of windows there for privacy and other reasons. Um, I'm okay with the fewer windows, uh, since they didn't change locations for other things, so, and I think there's probably enough light coming in from the front and the back for the other rooms, so, um, I think I'm okay with this. All right, any, we have a motion, or?
I was just gonna ask if Commissioner Moment had any thoughts.
No, I somewhat, you know, I agree with Commissioner McLard's comments, you know, these are narrow lots, um, and there is not enough space on either side for windows, and this is existing.
Apologies, can you speak into your microphone?
Louder, oh, there you go, yeah, please make sure it's on.
Sorry, yeah, so basically, I'm agreeing to, um, Commissioner McLard's comments, this is narrow lot, not enough space on either side as setback, and this is an existing house, and this is also not new construction, where we can, you know, um, ask for exceptional design guidelines to be complied with, and so, and also, like, core point of view, all the, you know, light requirements are being complied with, the, both the spaces are getting enough light from different sources, and so, there is nothing that is not being, you know, um, legally complied, so I don't think we're in a position to, um, require any window.
Okay, yeah, I, I agree, all valid arguments, so I'm not going to push it, I just wanted to make sure that my fellow commissioners were on board, so I'll just go ahead to move along and, uh, moved, uh, approval of planning applications twenty-four dash zero-three-six, ten forty, ten fifty-four Masonic Avenue.
Are you adding the added condition about the drainage plan, or no?
Uh, yeah, I, but I'm not sure how to phrase that.
I can phrase that.
Okay, yes, that we make sure to, uh, take into consideration the excavation and drainage needs thereof.
And I'll second that.
Okay, a vote, uh, Commissioner Pillishaw?
Yes.
Moment?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well, so that item, uh, four dash three, planning application twenty-four dash three-six, ten fifty-four Masonic Avenue, has been approved, there is a fourteen-day appeal period.
Appeal period runs through December twenty-sixth. If you're applying, uh, filing in person and appeal after the twenty-third, please drop it off at the police station next door, at one thousand San Pablo Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we'll move on to item five, announcements, communications, discussion, usually staff item, anything?
Um, I just want to mention that starting in the new year, we will be going back to two regularly scheduled meetings on the second and fourth of, uh, Wednesdays of the month, um, just for workload issues and to have, depending also on the number of applications, we are seeing a little bit of an uptick in applications middle. So it will provide a release valve, both for application, if we have a lot, and/or if we do happen to have, um, just have to cancel meetings for other reasons, but otherwise we will try to consolidate, to have more robust, um, valuable meetings for all of our time. Um, so that's coming up, and I will let you know that we already have, um, most likely three projects that will be going to the January meeting, as well as a, um, an ordinance amendment regarding, um, accessory structures, um, so.
Okay, thank you, any other?
Well, just a question about the, any policy stuff coming to us that you know of in the new year?
Well, it depends what you mean by policy, so, um, I think any ordinance is a policy, so that will be immediately in January, and then, um, at the request of the chair, once you are officially seated, which would be at the February meeting, um, we will go over a possible, um, we don't do work plans anymore, but it is on my agenda to go through the housing element for one, and bring up kind of, here are things we can work on and kind of get your input on that, knowing that we also have to infuse, um, the projects that we receive, and then other, um, priorities that come from other, um, departments, so, yes.
And then one more question about that, so then will the housing, uh, the housing committee be meeting, or no?
It will, um, and again, hoping it will be reappointed, and we are scheduling that for the first Wednesday of the month, so because they have to be ratified by City Council, their first meeting will be fe, the first Wednesday in February.
Okay, great, thank you, and then, just following on to that, commissioners, you probably know that we have to reapply for our positions, uh, all committee and commission members do, uh, so might be a slightly different body in the new year, maybe, maybe not, hopefully not, uh, we'll see.
But hopefully a full body.
Yes, yes.
Yes, that would be better. Um, okay.
Anything else from me?
Okay, anything else for, okay, we'll close item five, and we'll move on to item six, public comment. This is for persons desiring to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda. Please note that each speaker is limited to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the commission's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda, therefore such items are normally referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on a matter of public comment?
Hi, um, thank you for your time, my name is Rachel, I live on Pier Street, um, okay, I've lived there with my husband for thirty-nine years. We are residential street, ten percent of the population of Albany, and we're probably the most populated street in, uh, Alameda County. We have eight-hundred-and-seventy condos, at least fifty percent facing the Bay and Cleveland Avenue. In twenty-nineteen, um, the city, the zoning, yourselves also, all agreed to, um, approve a business on Cleveland Avenue. However, we wish you had included us as well, at least notified us so we could have some input, because it has such a dramatic impact on our street. We ask in the future that when other businesses come forward, to not approve them for twenty-four-seven if possible, because we're having such problems currently, um, and to notify us so we can have some future input. Uh, we also ask the city to adopt Caltrans codes for residential streets with, which mitigate light pollution. The freeway signs by Pier Street don't use any lighting at all out of respect for the residents. Um, also to consider having Caltrans construct a freeway sound wall for Cleveland Avenue to help mitigate the pollution and noise if the owners or whoever is leasing those buildings are in agreement. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on an item, a public comment? Please come forward, and you have, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, I am Dr. Stephen Alpert. Tonight I will again address the city's practice of following only the minimum state mandate of alerting those on three-hundred feet of proposed new construction, regardless of project size, when in fact for years, other municipalities have varied notification distances based on project size. My remarks are directed at those members of the commission who in twenty-twenty-two approved the submitted modern box design for a five-story mixed commercial residential structure at sixteen-hundred Solano, violating every aspect of your mission's commission statement. At previous council meetings, I reviewed Director Blonde's false assertion that state law precluded issuing citywide alerts for new construction and the months of non-responses and obfuscation by other city officials to avoid addressing three-hundred-feet notification. Briefly, Councilman Jordan and the city attorney have cited state laws which they contend might be construed to preclude different notification distances based on project size. Real-world experience indicates that these laws are irrelevant to public notification for new construction. In response to questions about the city of Beverly Hills' use of five-hundred and a thousand-feet notification for different project sizes since twenty-fourteen, and whether this practice has ever resulted in legal challenges, Community Development Director Michael Forbes replied, quote, "It is not uncommon for cities to have different noticing requirements depending on the type and size of project," end quote. "I spoke with a few of my colleagues, and to our knowledge, our requirements have not been challenged." During the October twenty-one meeting, Councilman Jordan incorrectly reasserted that Code six-five-oh-eight enacted in twenty-twenty-three prohibits cities from discriminating on projects based on their size. Director Forbes replied to this misinformation. "The city of Beverly Hills has not altered its noticing practices based on Code six-five-oh-eight or any other state law. Verbatim copies of these emails are provided to Albany City officials, and have hard cop, I have hard copies distributed to commission members. Responses provided by Director Forbes are few assertions that state laws preclude different notification differences, distances based on project size. I also spoke with Beverly Hills Urban Design Manager Mark Odell about the impact of density bonus law on their local building codes. While density bonus allows for higher building heights, reduced setbacks, and less parking, Mr. Odell assured me that the stringent building requirements in subsection B-two of their commercial transition zone are still enforced. Quote, "The facade and structure facing residential uses shall be harmonious with the adjacent residential character in architectural style, color, and material." Density bonus was cited as the reason the five-story structure at sixteen-hundred Solano had to be approved as submitted. At the very least, the commission should have insisted that the building have craft and style features to be harmonious with the neighborhood in accordance with your own mission statement."
Okay, thank you for your comments, time's up. Thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on a matter of public interest?
Uh, yes, we have, oops, we had someone online who just, um, yes, she's back, hold on, let me read. All right, you have three minutes.
Just to clarify, will there be a discussion regarding the planning application of two-four-oh-three-five, um, uh, or is this the only available option for speaking about that?
This is just time to speak about something that is not on the agenda.
And to clarify, is it on the agenda for the planning application two-four-oh-three-five for the Cleveland Avenue?
That, it, five-seven-eight Cleveland is on the agenda, and it's coming later.
Oh, understood, thank you for the clarification, and I see the remaining part of this time, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else online who wishes to speak?
Anyone else wishing to speak online, please use the raise the hand icon.
This is just for public comment, general interest, um, not a specific project comment.
No one else.
No one else? Uh, okay, then we will close item six, public comment, and move on to items, item seven, and we will start with item seven dash one, planning application two-four dash zero-three-seven-nine-oh-six Adams Street, which is a use permit and design review request to demolish an existing six-hundred-nine-square-foot, one-story, single-family residence and construct a new approximately one-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-six-square-foot, two-story, single-family dwelling unit.
That is correct.
Can you point for us?
Yes, so, good evening, my name is Mira Hahn, I'm associate planner here in the city of Albany, um, so yes, uh, this is a use permit and design review application for a new home at no, nine-oh-six Adams Street. Um, that's the project location, you can't, you can see that it's on the west side of Adams, um, very close to the intersection, uh, between Adams and Solano Avenue. The project is a zone, Solano Commercial, and, uh, the existing property, so there are some, um, uh, street view shots, as you can see, the existing property, uh, has been used or was used as a single-family residence, uh, as well, and it's in pretty, in a pretty dilapidated condition, so the project proposes to continue the residential use while improving, of course, the, the look of it. So, um, the project request, again, um, is design review and use permit, uh, so yes, it would, uh, the project would demolish the existing one-story, single-family residence and construct a new approximately seven, uh, one-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-six-square-foot, two-story, single-family dwelling unit. The project requires use permit, the reason for that is, uh, to establish a single-family residential use on the ground floor in the Solano Commercial District, um, which is required by our code and design review for the proposed structure. So that's, um, the site plan, uh, the architect has delineated, uh, the footprint of the existing home, that's in the red dotted line, and, uh, the, the floor plan of the proposed, and the site plan of the proposed construction. Uh, these are the existing elevations, again, the, kind of like the outline, the silhouette of the, uh, proposed against the, the location and, uh, you know, the, the volume, I guess, of the existing home. Uh, the proposed elevations are shown on this slide, and I should mention that the project meets all, um, development standards, and these are the proposed materials and colors, they're all very high-quality materials and colors, uh, which also propose kind of a mix of textures and colors and materials to provide some, a little bit of more of a modern, uh, look to the home, um, and, you know, landscaping definitely has been provided to improve the, the, the aspect, I guess, uh, of the home from street view as well, and for the enjoyment of future residents. So this is an- So, this is a rendering, a three-dimensional rendering, and you can tell that there are some details that have been added to the front facade, which is articulated in a way that the second story is pulled back, and also it has an upper-level deck atop the garage, and the entry porch is aligned with the garage, which also has like a carriage-style door and trellis atop. So, staff believes that this is, you know, a really nice design, and we're supportive of it. Again, exceptional design projects require, you know, are usually the ones that, not usually, but they are the ones that are forty-five percent FAR or more, and they also require a landscape plan, which has been included, as you can, as you were able to see from the plans that were posted online. These are some of the design treatments, so gabled roof at the front porch following the main roof line, carriage-style door, decorative trellis at the garage, plain differentiation by setting the second story back, mixed, mixed-up materials and textures, new fiberglass-clad recessed windows with simulated divided lights. So, staff has not received any correspondences in regards to the design itself, apart from one email from a member of the public asking when the project would be heard. And with that, staff recommends that the planning zone commission review and approve the proposed project as conditioned.
Presentation, sorry. Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions for staff from commissioners?
Yeah.
Is there a moment?
I wanted to know if this site is being considered for rezoning as part of Housing Element?
For rezoning?
Yeah.
No, it is, what, it is Solano Commercial, so it was part of the Solano-specific plan.
I, I remember some old discussions about like, you know, incompatibility of heights between, you know, the San Pablo Commercial, the lots facing Adams Street, and then from the east side, and then lot facing Adams Street from the west side, and so the height descriptions, discrepancy, all that, and I remember there was some discussion about like doing some rezoning for the lots that are on the west side of Adams. So, yes, we're wondering like if this site is under consideration for that.
When I go through the programs of the Housing Element, maybe that will come forward in February, yes.
Okay, no.
But not at this time.
So, just wanted to like highlight that fact so that owner knows there could be, you know, different opportunities for development than just a single-family home, and if they have, you know, different preferences in that case.
Actually, I, I do have a question. I don't, I'm not finding, you have, you, you showed some, staff, you showed some comparisons of the old versus the new with red dotted lines showing the old, yeah, perfect, and I don't think that's in our packet, but maybe I'm wrong. So, if you could go back to the, the first one, there we go, site plan, and then, okay, I see the, I see the red line of the existing footprint, and then if you go to the, perfect. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to see that again. Thanks.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Is the applicant here? Mind just giving us a brief description of your project, please?
Yeah. My name's Andrew. I'm the designer of this project, and so one thing, Mira, thank you so much for putting the staff report together. One thing that some people may or may not know about the Solano Commercial is we actually undersized this house in what we are allowed to do on this site. So, just for the public, and some may say, oh, they look at this and say, wow, you're dramatically changing this house. Yes, this house was built many years ago. Solano Commercial, you are allowed to build up to a zero lot line on basically all four sides of this property. You're allowed to go up to thirty-five feet in height. I believe we're only about twenty-four six here, and we are allowed to build a building that is roughly three thousand one hundred and twenty-five square feet, which we are, we're roughly fifty percent, have fifty-four percent. So, what, the way that we've tried to design this, we've tried to take all parties into consideration, the neighbors, the contextual heights of most of the buildings. There's, right on Solano Ave, there's some single-story. We tried to also consider the usage of this house and create a house that someone could live in for years to come, right? It's a three-bedroom, three-bath property where if, that's kind of the, the perfect house, where it's not too big, not too small, you're not going to outgrow it, you're not going to get too old and not be able to live in it for, for a while. What we have tried to do here is Adams Street, as many know, there's a condo project right across the way. There's very minimal parking. We're right at the end of, right at the juncture of Adams Street and Solano, very limited parking right to downtown, so we tried to create a garage. I know it's not required by California law, but I don't think the Bay Area has quite gotten up to that law yet, where I think everyone has at least one or two cars to get to the grocery store. So, what we tried to do is create off-street parking for this residence. We tried to create the design look and feel of this to be more of a modern ranch. We do have a narrow lot, so it was a little more difficult to create the undulations within the facade and on the sides, but what we tried to do was create that break by the, the board and bat on the second floor, the horizontal siding on the first floor, and then, as you see in our rendering, there is a bump out on the left side, so it gives some undulations and some material differentials of that facade to just not make it one flat wall. So, that's.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm wondering like you thought, you know, not fully utilizing the potential, development potential of the site, of course, maybe you did not think the commercial is, you know, that viable there, but did you think about like, you know, maybe, you know, using the ground level for a live-work unit or something that would not even require, you know, this use permit, because that, I think, is permitted.
Yep, so we did consider that, but in today's, you know, work-from-home culture, I know we're starting to get away from that, we didn't feel that in this specific zone of Solano Ave would contribute to a well-utilized commercial space. It's still on a residential street. There's, really, I don't think there's any other businesses on Adams Street. There's one down on Solano, so we didn't feel that it was a good use of this property. We felt that it would be better suited for a single-family house. And live works, there's not many of them, and, you know, there's this, some people will use them, some people won't, you know, so we just felt that it'd be better use for a single-family house.
Okay.
So, if I may add to this conversation, so there is a land use policy included in the general plan, in our general plan, that says that, so policy, land use two point eight, Cane's Avenue and Adams Street, where it says that maintain, there should be efforts to maintain Cane's Avenue and Adams Street as predominantly residential uses. Land use regulations should limit, so basically what it's saying is that these two streets, staff and applicants and development should be geared towards more residential, to keep that nature, and also we should mention that the lot size is quite small, quite narrow, so maybe the potential for commercial is not quite there. But, yeah, basically, I wanted to point out on the.
But the zoning map contradicts that, you know, zoning is like, you know, measuring hundred, I think, hundred feet from Solano and putting a boundary there, you know, so even if we want the lot facing Adams to be residential, you know, it is considering the whole area. There are like, I think, six lots in that tiny area.
Yeah, yeah, those, it's the first, it's the first two lots, I believe. I think ours is the last one, and then the, the property to the left of it, I think, is our two.
Four, I think. There are like tiny lots.
I think, yeah, our lots, the last SC zoning on, on our.
There, there are small lots, so it's, you know, reasonable that, when whoever did the zoning map, they kind of considered a deeper zone, and your lot was included in that even, yeah, okay.
Right.
And then my next question is about, you know, trees, there are some really big trees on the site.
Mm-hmm.
Are you planning to retain any of those?
No, so those, those, right now, they are hacked up, so I think before, when they were selling it, because it was such a dense, densely populated area, they just started going through and cutting it, so I don't even think that they're, you know, that nice-looking. So, we'll have to remove those and plant some, some other vegetation.
Okay, thank you.
Well, some will have to be removed just to build the, the house as well, yeah.
Any other questions, or no? Okay, then, thank you for the presentation, and we will move on to public comment on this project. Anyone that would like to speak in the audience on this project, or do we have anyone online?
Yes, we have someone online. Mari, you have three minutes.
Hello, this is Joe Hayama. I know it's under Mari's name. I'm at one zero zero six Solano, your neighbor to the north. I was just wondering about the, there, I know that the very front tree was removed, but there's also another tree, sort of where I see the, yeah, pretty large tree, and it, and it, yeah, and it fell on the existing house before, but I was just wondering if, if that tree is going to be removed or, or moved.
That was the only question, whether the tree would be moved?
Yeah, but is it, is it, is it normal height? So, the height, height looks very high to me. Is it in, under the code, or is it higher than normal, or is it standard height?
So, you have three minutes to speak, so you can ask all your questions at once, and when we close public comment, we can address your questions.
Okay, all right. So, I just need to know the setback from the Adams Street to the house, how many feet, but I'm sure it says on the, on the plan. But main concern is if you remove the, the huge tree that used, used to fell on the, on the house, existing house, do they remove it, or you just cut some part of it? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments and questions. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this project?
If anyone else wishes to speak, please come up to the dials or use the raise the hand icon. Nope.
All right, seeing no more public comment, we'll close that. I guess there was a question about height, which I think we answered already. It's well below the allowable height. I don't remember the exact.
That's correct.
Of the project, but it's.
So, base, so according to the development standards for the Solano Commercial District, the maximum height is thirty-five feet, which is not here, so this, the proposed is twenty-eight. So, this is well below the allowable height in this Solano Commercial District, as well as it's more designed as if it were located in the single-family residential district. So, the, the setbacks, including the front setback, the height, the FAR is almost, like, it's designed as if it had been located in a single-family residential district, so let's say, even if this was located in a single-family residential district, the proposed height would be allowed.
Right, so it's well below the height limits, and, okay, and then, last question about the tree? I don't know, I can't really find, I don't see the tree on the plan set, which means you're going to remove the tree, is what I'm assuming, and I don't know what kind of tree it is, or where it is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming it's the one right on the, right on the fence line between our property and the neighbor's property, which it will be removed. It's a pretty large tree that's kind of hacked up and not in the best of shape.
Yeah, would kind of dominate the site by the looks of it.
Yeah, I think it's on the right property line. Yeah.
Right, I was just looking for it on.
It's not the large one on the front left, I think it's on the right side.
In the back over there.
Yeah, it's kind of right behind the power pole.
Yeah. Anyway, you're, you're going to remove the tree.
Yeah, the site does not look like this currently.
Right, just, okay, okay, fair enough. I think that's all we need to know, and I, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and we'll move to commissioner discussion. Any discussion? Commissioners, any thoughts?
I can start if you, if that's all right. I think the project looks good, looks like a well-designed residence. I don't have any comments on that, but I will comment on a few things that just, just came up. One is, yeah, I, I don't know what's the, I, I know this property because I've, I've walked by it a few times. I don't know the, the current condition of the trees, though I haven't looked anytime recently. Of course, if the construction requires removal of trees, then, then so be it. If there are any mature trees, I would, I would just ask you to take a second look and see if there are any mature trees that would be appropriate to save, do consider that. I do note that there are some street trees there anyway, so that's, that's great, and okay, did, did you want to speak to that, or?
One street tree.
One street tree. I see, I see one adjacent to, one, yeah, one street tree in front of that property, and then there's one, I, I just mean, there's a few street trees along that street, which is, which is great, so that, that street is not devoid of trees, so there will still be some trees left. That's trees, and, and it, and then speaking to you, to your comments, it, it almost, and I might have taken this incorrectly, but it almost sounded like you were not apologizing, but saying it was a good thing that you didn't max out the available space that you could use, and it was a good thing that you added the garage. I think Commissioner Moment is kind of getting to the fact that this commission would be very happy if you maxed out the space and the height, and that would have been totally fine, and you certainly don't have to, you wouldn't have to convince us, convince us of that. It's an appropriate place to do so. It is zoned that way. And then in terms of the garage, that's certainly up to you to provide a garage, but as you noted, you, you certainly don't have to, and, you know, the more we provide parking for cars, we know that you build it, they will come. You build spaces for cars, and cars will show up, unfortunately, so I'd be fine, I, I think this commission would be fine if you, if there were no garage either. Otherwise, you know, it's your property to do what you want with, and I think you've produced a, a very nice-looking application. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Moment, comments?
Yeah, so I think it's a, you know, great improvement to this site. I live like four or five blocks from this site, and I walk by that, you know, location almost every day, and I know it is kind of very unkempt, you know, kind of deteriorating, you know, house for so many years, so this is a big improvement that you are doing, you are restoring a house, you know, adding to the housing stock. you are restoring a house, you know, adding to the housing stock of the city. Uh, as, you know, I've earlier implied and Commissioner, uh, Pilchaz mentioned, you know, it would be great if you can like think about maximizing the potential of this site and even like, you know, consider a multifamily, not like a big structure, but like, you know, a duplex or triplex on this site, if that works with your, you know, pro forma and your marketing studies or if you have done. But, you know, if you want to build a single-family home, that's your choice. Uh, in terms of design, I think it's a decent design, very suitable for a small house, a small, you know, lot property. Uh, the materiality all is, all, you know, organized nicely, the proportions are good. Only one thing I thought is looking kind of out of place aesthetically, but that is my, you know, choice is, uh, my test is, uh, the guardrail above the garage. You know, it's wood, natural finish wood, which is completely, you know, uh, different from the rest of the house aesthetic. You know, everywhere it is all painted or your, um, you know, siding is painted. Uh, I don't know what material the siding is, uh, but the, the palette that you have is basically, you know, paint finishes, uh, whether it is fiberglass or wood or metal and the guardrail is the only thing that is kind of natural finish and it is looking kind of odd in the whole scheme of finishes. So, you know, if that is still your choice, you know, it's not a condition, but, uh, that is something you can look at and make it more maybe, you know, uh, integral to the house. Other than that. Yeah, other than that, I don't have any comments, it's a nice project, I support it as design.
Okay, all done, um, yeah, I just like, would, would add in, I mean, I think I hear where my fellow commissioners are coming from, we are actually in search for building more housing in Albany, so in that sense, we would have been fine with something that was maxing things out, maybe two units, uh, you know, would have been, would have been fine. So we're not actually looking to shrink things, you know, it's a, a different reality, but at the same time, this is going to be a nice little house, be a perfectly fine residence for a family, uh, be a nice addition to the neighborhood, huge upgrade from what you've got there, so we appreciate, you know, investing in our community and creating a, you know, new home. Uh, and similarly, the design looks nice, it looks like it'll be, you know, very contextual to the other single-family homes in the neighborhood, so that's fine. Floor plan looks very nice, um, uh, and I would echo Commissioner Pilchaz's comment about a mature tree, in general, if you could preserve the mature tree in the back, that would be great, thin it, keep it there, you know, we're trying to reduce our heat island effect and provide shading and keep the house cooler on hot days, et cetera. So, uh, if there is any way to keep the mature tree, I think that would be appreciated, uh, or plant some more trees maybe in the back, um, you have room there in the patio area. Uh, that's really all I would have to say about that, I think, so.
Um, and I'll, I'll just add, uh, a contrasting viewpoint to Commissioner Moment's viewpoint, uh, I like what you've done with the, the, the natural wood railing and it looks like the, um, there's a trellis over the garage and a post, uh, holding up the porch over the front steps that are in a contrasting color. I, I, I like all those elements myself personally, so.
Uh, the only, last thing I would add is that, um, I would encourage you to go all-electric. We don't have an all-electric ordinance anymore because, uh, it was struck down or when it was modeled after, it was struck down. Uh, but it is still your opportunity to do that and it's a much more efficient house, safer, more sustainable and there's, you know, you save money on the gas infrastructure and you put it into your electrical work and it kind of pays for itself almost to do that. So I would really strongly encourage that. So, do we have a motion to?
Me as well, encourage the all-electric. Uh, sure, I can make a motion unless Commissioner Moment wants to.
You can go ahead.
Okay, uh, I will move approval of planning application twenty-four dash zero three seven nine oh six Adam Street. And I don't think there were any additional conditions.
No, not, no strictly, no, not, no strict conditions, no. Encouragement to keep the mature tree and go all-electric. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I second that.
Vote, Commissioner Moment?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, your project has been approved, that's seven dash one, planning application twenty-four zero three seven nine oh six Adam Street approved. So there's fourteen-day appeal period, I don't think your story polls up or no or? There are, then you must leave them up till the end of the appeal period, which is essentially the end of the year. Thank you very much for your application.
Thank you.
And so we will move on to item seven dash two, planning application twenty-four dash zero three five five seven eight Cleveland Avenue. Design review request two-one, establish an approximately one thousand six hundred square-foot covered patio area on the south-left side of the existing building. That includes a barbecue area and outdoor dining for a future restaurant and increase the size of two roof-mounted signs from previously approved twelve-foot by five-foot, sixty-square-foot signs to fifteen-foot by seven-foot, one hundred five square feet. And three, project review and potential modification of existing discretionary approvals from PA eighteen dash oh six three to ensure compliance with project conditions and city code requirements. With that, staff?
Yes. Presentation, yes.
Presentation for us, thank you.
Thank you, um, I'm Leslie Mendez, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department and as the chair mentioned, this is design review, planning application twenty-four zero three five for the property at five seven eight Cleveland Avenue. Oops, that's not how I. So the project site, um, is an eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-square-foot lot, which is located on the east side of San Pablo Avenue. Um, I have the wrong information here, I am so sorry. Let's go. Give me a second here. All right, it is a sixty-fourth, sixty-two thousand four hundred square-foot lot, which fronts Cleveland Avenue to the east with Interstate eighty beyond and the Southern Pacific Railroad tracks to the west with Interstate five eighty beyond. The area is part of the city's commercial services and production zone and is dominated by industrial storage and warehouse uses. The site is developed with a twenty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-nine square-foot open industrial warehouse-style building that was originally constructed in nineteen forty-eight and substantially added to in nineteen seventy-three. On January, oops. On January tw- um, twenty-third of twenty nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved application eighteen dash zero six three to convert the building into a commercial kitchen for food truck and catering services, a restaurant, a microbrewery, a live-work unit, a mezzanine conference room office space that was converted just to office space during building permit application and food truck parking for approximately food truck, sixty food trucks. Um, approval also included new signage. So. I am really a, um. I apologize, this is not the correct, which is what's going on here. I should have it here. This one, right? Where does that, I do apologize. Is it this one? Mm-hmm. Okay, so I do apologize. Um, the city did issue the building permit for the project on September eighth of twenty twenty and the project owner did receive a temporary certificate of occupancy or a TCO on March fourteenth of twenty twenty-four to commence operations of the commercial kitchen while work is being completed on the, on the other project elements. Since the property own, owner began renovating the property and moving forward with proper, uh, project implementation, city staff has received numerous complaints from the public, regarding the project site and its operation, predominantly regarding lighting, signage and truck parking, but also regarding hours of operation, rooftop equipment, landscaping, setbacks, safety, energy conservation, accessibility and structural soundness. Um, the comments can be found in attachment four to the staff report and have been recently, uh, been updated and forwarded to you all. Due to the volume of comments and the level of concern, staff is bringing the original entitlements of planning application eighteen zero six three up for review to the commission in tandem with the new design review request for consideration, modification to ensure that the terms or conditions of the approval of the permit, as well as other laws and regulations, have not been violated and that the uses being and will continue to be conducted in a manner that is not contrary to the public's health, safety or welfare, which is pursuant to section twenty one hundred zero one, zero one zero of our zoning code. Staff notes that project review and discussion is limited tonight to those concerns raised that are within the purview and authority of both the zoning code and the planning commission. So, for project review, the uses in operation, um, the uses that were approved are both appropriate for the industrial area for which it is located, as well as conditionally permitted in the CMX district. However, as outlined in a lot more detail in the staff report, um, staff does recommend adding conditions that kind of clarify and specify things such as the hours of operation, noise, alcohol service and sales, use of sustainable foodware in compliance with our new ordinance, terms of private events, including security, as well as notification of city staff and leaving gates open during any time that private events and/or the public is available, say for restaurant hours. Regulations regarding live-work space, these are requirements and limitations that are in our zoning ordinance and are added as conditions of approval, just for reminder and clarity, as well as a recommended condition that lights should be turned off when not in use, including the areas in the mezzanine and, and the outdoor dining area, the patio, as well as vehicles when not in operation. Staff did not, um, include a condition regarding blacking out or phasing out the, um, the windows on the top level of the building. However, it has been raised by public comment and if staff, staff isn't, or the commission is invited to discuss that, to consider perhaps, if staff were to make a recommendation, if the commission were so inclined, would recommend translucent kind of, um, film as opposed to a blackout film. Um, additionally, um, this, the zoning ordinance does have exterior lighting performance standards that can be found in our code. And summarized, it does state that exterior standards shall be designed and maintained in a manner that minimizes and/or avoids glare on any public right-of-way or on any other parcel. I will note here that our ordinance does define glare as a direct sightline to the light source. So a lot of people do interpret glare, uh, more of a layperson is kind of the bright light, but we do see, like, if you see the light source. Um, another standard is that exterior lighting shall be mounted no higher than sixteen feet above grade unless approved through a minor use permit. That it shall be shielded so that no light is emitted above an angle of eighty-five degrees. That it shall conform with recommended Illuminating Engineering Society of North America Lighting Handbook standards and that it shall not exceed a maximum of point five horizontal foot candles when measured twenty feet beyond the property lines. To ensure compliance with the city's glare and illumination performance standards, um, staff has recommended conditions as outlined in the staff report that will verify height limitation, including no rooftop lighting, um, no uplighting, all the lighting shall be required, downlighting and cutoff app for the performance standards. Additional condition regarding the shielding of light from both the western and eastern views, um, no one wants to see the bright lights from across the bay. Um, a condition regarding color temperature, that of three thousand degrees Kelvin, which is going towards a, a warmer color, but not overly warm, so it should still be bright enough for kind of the exterior operations that are required for parking. Um, a, a suggested condition of, um, that would be handled anyway, but a pre-final occupancy verification of compliance of all these standards, as well as, um, that the project would be subject to a post-installation inspection and requirement, um, or verification at the direction and, um, of the Community Development Director if there are changes to, um, conditions after final occupancy. So another, um, issue that came up was the mechanical equipment on the roof and the zoning code requires that the mechanical equipment is screened from public view. The screening has been included in the approved project, um, plan set, um, from planning as well as in the approved building plan set. So just to verify that this will occur, um, staff is recommending just another condition requiring that the, that there is a building permit supplemental with materials and mounting details prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy, as well as verification that such screening has indeed been installed. And just for everyone who knows, um, when we do require screening as part of our, our ordinance, it is, um, screening around the vertical sides, not the top. So the intent was that it was from, as viewed from the public right-of-way, so obviously, if you are coming across from a higher-level apartment building and/or a plane or anything looking down, you may still be able to see mechanical equipment. So moving on to the actual design review request, um, one was, uh, just regarding signage. So the, there is actually no maximum signage area in the CMX district. It, all signage is subject to Planning and Zoning Commission review. So the original approval was, did include a nine-by-seven or sixty-three square-foot sign on the north facade that the applicant has, um, proposed to retain and it is shown here. There is also a request to increase the two rooftop signs that were originally approved at twelve feet by five feet or sixty square-foot each, increased to fifteen feet by seven feet or, um, a hundred and five square feet each. So the top image there is the signage, um, area that was approved and the bottom is the signage area that has, um, that is being proposed. So one thing about the signage that lost my notes, so I will. So, one thing about the signage that lost my notes, so I will read directly from the staff report is... So, the two proposed rooftop signs with a total linear distance of thirty feet and a height of seven feet would be installed on the building that is thirty and a half feet tall in height and has a two hundred and twenty-foot linear frontage. So, the combined rooftop signage would therefore span approximately fourteen percent of the length of the building. The two-foot height increase does appear substantial on such a low-story building, giving the, and it does give the rooftop signs the appearance of billboards, which staff is not sure really meets the visual intent of our signage ordinance and/or increases the, kind of the attractive nature of them. However, I do want to note that they are counting for a four-inch kind of allowance for the mounting. It would be approximately thirty-seven feet in height, which is under the forty-five-foot height limit for the district. Signs would also be separated by approximately a hundred and eight feet, which thereby also breaks up the massing of the signage. And as the subject property is sighted between two highways, the closest private properties facing the rooftop signs are more than four hundred feet away. So, based on these conditions, staff does believe that the increase in size is appropriate but does invite the commission to consider a lower height. I think the width is fine and/or consider relocating the signs, perhaps as used as screening or what have you. But staff is not, not supportive of this. The second design review request is for a covered patio area that is located on the south side of the building. This covered patio is sixteen hundred square feet, which includes about a thousand square feet of area over an outdoor dining area, which is towards the east side, and about six hundred square feet of area that is covered towards the west side, that is a barbecue slash cooking area. The project, the patio cover is setback approximately sixty feet from the front property line and it is conditioned so that it is two and a half feet from the side property line and six feet from the rear property line. And that is a project, it's a requirement per the code but will need to be reflected in the building permit plans that are submitted for this. So, as mentioned in the staff report, the patio area is at a lower elevation than the majority of the site, so it is not very visible from the public right-of-way as can be seen here. And staff is fully supportive of approving the patio. So, the project is compliant with the development standards for the patio and for signage and everything else as conditioned. And it does meet general plan policy standards for flexibility in the area and buffering. And I am skipping to the last slide. These are the applicable findings for design review approval. But for next steps, staff does recommend that the planning and zoning commission approve the proposed project, subject to the attached findings and conditions of approval, and discusses if there's any modifications to those conditions recommended by staff and/or any others that you wish to strike and/or add. And staff will continue to work with the property owner. We have been working together to adjust the lighting, to come into compliance with the adopted performance standards. And again, failure to comply can result in bringing the project back again for further modification or revocation. And with that, I do turn it over to the commission for start with questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. I think we'll start with questions for staff from commissioners. So, do either of you have questions about the project? We can, so what we'll do is commissioners will ask questions of staff if the applicant is online or here or...
The applicant's available.
Okay, there you are. And maybe we'll hear from you afterwards and then we will go to public comment. Okay, so we'll start with questions from commissioners to staff about the presentation and any questions about the project.
Sure.
Start?
Yeah, so I understand that as part of the conditions of approval, there are some limits on hours of operations. So, do those limits apply to all activities or some?
Staff has divided the conditions of approval based on the different uses. So, the outdoor patio staff has conditioned at seven AM to nine PM daily and that would include all uses, including cooking. The restaurant, our ordinance allows restaurants that serve alcohol to be open from eight AM to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and eight AM to twelve AM Fridays and Saturdays unless other hours are approved. The original approval did say seven AM, so staff has conditioned it or recommended the conditions of seven AM to eleven PM. So, just made the starting hour at seven as originally approved. Staff did not believe that that would be an issue. As to the mezzanine hour, since it is an office use, staff also suggested the hours of seven AM to nine PM daily for the mezzanine use. And then the commercial kitchen is an industrial use that does involve pretty much twenty-four-seven operations. I mean, it probably won't be fully twenty-four-seven, but you do have food trucks as well as caterers who come in, who need to start early, do the work, pack their trucks, probably are out all day and do come late. So, staff did not feel that restricting those hours was appropriate for that use, which is as a reminder in the industrial district.
Okay, but then the controls on light would not exactly match those hours. There would be more, you know, restrictions on the lights being on because that is one of the, you know, major issue that we are dealing with.
Correct, so staff recommended a condition that the lights in the mezzanine and the outdoor patio area be turned off. Out, you know, allowed some light a half hour before and after for the outdoor seating area to give time for setup and cleanup if need be. Staff did not believe that a condition regarding the restaurant was necessary in the lighting because as you can see, based on the elevations of the building and the location of the restaurant, any lights within the restaurant wouldn't be visible, really outside. And then in terms of the industrial operations, that is where the internal lights are difficult. The code doesn't regulate internal lighting. So, although staff didn't initially recommend, again, for twenty-four hours operation to restrict the lighting in any way, staff, as mentioned, does invite the commission to, if for some of the public comment, want to consider some type of film over the glass windows that are on the top to kind of, it wouldn't create dark skies, but it may just create a slight filter from some of the brighter lights that especially at night seem quite bright when you're looking towards the dark. I hope that answered your question.
Yep, and then, I know this is an industrial site, but it is also close to the bay, you know, which is, you know, ecologically sensitive always. There is wildlife and, you know, all these twenty-four-seven activities with lights and all that surely, you know, impact wildlife. I see that you mentioned that, you know, the project has to comply with IESNA lighting guidelines, but being close to the bay, are there any other additional guidelines applicable? There are these, you know, dark sky sightline, sightlighting guidelines, which basically, you know, focus on wildlife, basically, you know, you know, the, everything that they have, you know, considered, the impact on wildlife and so intensity of light, orientation of light sources and heights and things also considered. So, do we have those kind of guidelines that we can apply or?
We don't and we do not have a lighting expert, including myself on staff. However, we do have the performance standards that once implemented will be helpful, including a change in the light temperature to three thousand. The other thing is, the one condition I did add was the full shielding on the east and west side because it's, it's not just the apartment residents across Pier Street who view these lights, but as you mentioned, it's wildlife, it's people on the bay, it's even people perhaps in Marin because I know I can see lights across the bay on Marin. I'm like, why do I have to look at this? So, it's to make sure that the light that is installed is adequate for the uses on the site, that it focuses on the site and not off the site.
Yeah, and there are...
That is the goal.
Right.
And there will be working back and forth to get there for sure. So, if anyone, if you have any guidelines, you can pass on.
Yeah, if not guidelines, you know, at least like, you know, a good photometric study that shows the adequacy of light, you know, rather than like overlighting unnecessarily. Okay, and then, you have mentioned some controls over lighting operations and all that, so I'm wondering like, can some of the exterior lights also can be, you know, reduced rather than having all lights on during, you know, nighttime when the kitchen is operational, but, you know, all the sightlighting doesn't have to be on? So, can there be some strategy where, you know, some of the lights are turned off? You know, only the light that are necessary for security, you know, are turned on? So, there could be a nice lighting plan that looks at that where, you know, the pathways, parking areas and some, you know, areas where lighting is necessary for security would be turned on. Turn, and then rest of the lights are turned off after, you know, like, restaurant is closed, you know, outdoor dining is closed, then you don't, you know, need parking, like, lighting to the approach, that approaches those spaces. And also building light, you know, doesn't have to be on.
Correct. I think where staff was struggling to balance was the kind of twenty-four almost operations of the commercial kitchen and since that is the majority of the site, and that includes trucks coming in and out. How to balance that use? Again, that is an appropriate use for that district and is actually a very needed use. It's a very popular, yes. How to balance that is, it's easier if it were just a, you know, we just need security lights on to prevent people from breaking in or to discourage people from breaking in.
Right, yeah, that's what I mean.
As opposed to people who are actually actively using that space during that time. So, trying to find that balance. Again, staff is open to ideas to how to best accommodate both the uses, operations, as well as...
Right, so I would like to understand, you know, hours of operations more. Like, when is the, you know, activity happen? Like, kitchen cooking activity might, you know, go on whole night.
Correct.
But then the visitor that come in, like, all the food trucks come in, maybe they come in early in the morning, you know, maybe three AM or something. And so, there might be some window, you know, where, when it could be reduced. And, yeah, something like that. So, just, you know, if we can, you know, coordinate hours of operation with lights being on. I know you mentioned there would be limit to lights being turned on after nine in the mezzanine area, which is, I think, a good idea because mezzanine, when it is lit and through the north light, you know, clear story, it is all very brightly lit. And so, turning those off after nine would be really a big impact. And so, something like that could be, I think, yeah.
And if you, after the rest of the questions, if you'd like to ask the applicant about the current operations and the hours of use, that would, he knows best about that.
Yeah, thank you, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Pils, you have questions?
Yeah, just quickly, so attachment to conditions of approval, these are revised condi-, would you, would you say, is it correct to say these are revised conditions of approval, including some of the original conditions of approval?
So, no, because what these are, are, unless they're modified below, all the original conditions of the original approval are in full force and effect. So, what this is, is additional conditions and/or slightly modified. Most of them are just new conditions, but I didn't want to repeat all the conditions from before and I didn't want to eliminate them either. So, that's what these conditions are and the majority of them are really just restating what are requirements either of our zoning ordinance, our performance standards, and the approved uses, so.
Okay, okay, and so, and just for my clarification, we are, we are approv-, the project is already approved, or the application is already approved. We are being asked to vote on additional conditions of approval.
You are, your task is threefold tonight. One is the new design review request for the patio cover area. Two is a new designer view request for increased size of the rooftop signs. And three is actually a reopening of the original approval. Two, review to see if it's appropriate. Two, consider additional conditions or revisions necessary to ensure compliance with the code and approval.
And the reopening includes staff's suggestions for additional conditions?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you for that and I think just one more quick question. The, you mentioned light from the top windows. Are the light sources visible through those top windows or just light or light from the sources?
You know, that I, I do not know.
Okay, that's fine, that's all I had for questions for now.
Okay, thank you. I had a couple of questions. I understand the core business is the food trucks and servicing the food trucks and all that. And then, is the restaurant open already and?
No, currently there is a building permit, active building, building permit application for the restaurant use. So, the only area that is currently open is the commercial kitchen area.
So, that's a sort of an interior tenant improvement type permit?
Correct.
The building permit for the restaurant?
Correct.
Not yet operational, but soon, sometime soon, okay. And then I had a question, which we haven't really seen before, but the idea of security guards, is that, can you explain your thinking or reasoning? We haven't seen that before, but we have seen other events in town that would have been helpful.
Yeah.
Certain businesses.
Exactly, so this is just based on experience. So, we don't want to prevent the, for the owner, the applicant, to have private events or private rentals. But we want to ensure that any private event or private rental is kind of compliant with the underlying uses, which is essentially a restaurant with an outdoor seating area and/or perhaps an office use that may, in the current building permit, be converted back to conference use. So, part of it, it is pretty standard in many jurisdictions that if you do have kind of outside private events, that you do have out, like, separate security just to ensure, just operations don't go awry. We also want to ensure that any out, you know, private event, especially if it is from a third party, doesn't turn into kind of a nightclub sort of situation because that's not what the building is designed for, has a project approval for. So, it's just some extra security measures that truthfully, anytime we have kind of private events, I think many times, hopefully, things like Foodie Land had private security, but it is a pretty standard practice for, for these types of uses.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my only other question was more hours of operations. Difference, really the difference between the outdoor patio and the restaurant hours? And that is mostly thinking about noise?
Yes, so that was, I will admit, that was one I, I created for the outdoor patio, the hours, so the commission can choose to expand them, retract them. I felt that it's a nice idea. I'm not sure, you know, it could be... I'm not sure, you know, it could be a nice idea to sit out there at night. However, being outside is where more impacts could occur to to neighbors, especially with lights. So it was, it was a little arbitrary, but so there, I invite you to consider a variation on those hours as as you all deliberate and.
Okay, fair enough. So no more questions for staff. Would the applicant like to speak to us, please? Give us your point of view, and we'll have some questions for you as well, I suppose.
Good evening. Thanks for taking the time. I'm here to answer any questions, correct some statements, prove to you that everything that I've done and everything that I'm going to do fits within the city of Albany and the rules. So please ask me your questions. I mean, I can, I can start, if you want, with the signage. So what happened with the signage, there was a mistake through Philip Seabrook Associates, our third-party print reviewer and the city. And the prints came to me stamped and approved with no dimensions on the upstairs signage. So I scaled it up, and the scale was twenty feet wide by ten feet high. I go, wow, that's big. I put them up, because that's what was stamped and approved. The city, Jeff Bond, everybody involved, we got into a little situation of that's not going to work. And so we took the signs down, and we countered back with a new size, but smaller than the twenty foot by ten foot, but not to the size that the city had recommended, because the building was so long, the signs would be lost. So that's what the signage, fifteen feet by seven feet, that's where that dimension came from, has a considerate, you know, a consideration to what the signages are on the street right now and what was proposed. Bay Shore Electric, next door, has four signs above rooftop that are eight feet by ten feet. Down the street, a couple of doors down, Albany Steel, they originally had a sign that was five feet by thirty feet. And I, my understanding, when I talked to them the other day, they're just making a new sign, and they're going to put up the five by thirty. So I didn't think that the fifteen by sevens were too wild of a call, so to speak. And that's where I am with the signage. The front patio, where we're covering the patio for eating area and the barbecues, you can't see it from the street. There was one picture that was sent by people who live at Albany Hill or Pier Street, that they had obviously went down on the freeway and took a sideways shot to say, hey, look at all these bright lights. Doesn't exist, okay? You can't see any lighting. You see some twinkle lights, and that's about it. Noise. We have four hundred thousand cars a day that go by the two freeways with bright lights, trucks, horns. I don't think that a little restaurant with a little bit of silverware noise or chatter is going to really affect noise to Pier Street. So that, I think, is just a crazy thought process, that noise would be there. I have no problem hiring a lighting expert to make sure all the lighting is perfected, but the lights have to stay on. We've had two generators stolen already, okay? And it's, I have caterers that come in at two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock, and they have to park their cars, and they got to come down into the building. Shutting lights off, it's just not going to cut it, you know, because the safety. We've had several complaints from the city that we took care of right away for the lighting that's against the building and has asked us to aim the building lights downward. We've got them all the way down. There's, there's no more of an angle than we could, than what we've already done on all these lights. And after we did that, it took a couple of days to adjust them and get them right. We didn't have any more complaints. So I don't think that there's any complaints coming in from the parking lot. As far as complaints from Marin, that's, I'd love to see that, okay? There's, we're, our lights are all angled down. There are no bright lights heading towards the freeway. And again, I'll hire a lighting expert to address those. Putting coverings on the window, I mean, World War II, are we going to black out the building now? I mean, come on, we're not going to black out our windows, okay? The lights, you cannot see, the lights are LEDs, they're mounted high on the trusses, and you see the lighting going through the windows. It's been like that since nineteen fifty-five. So I don't understand why anybody's saying, you know, cover your windows, okay? That doesn't seem reasonable at all. Equipment coverage, I have no problem doing that. Matter of fact, the roof is all set up for equipment coverage to cover the equipment. The issue is, we have a lot of equipment. So even if we put five-foot-high coverage along the front of it, it's not going to do anything for Pier Street looking down on all the equipment over a metal divide, okay? But if you want, if you want it, not a problem, I'll put it up. One of the issues that, we have terrible landscaping. We got one of the prettiest buildings on the street now, okay? Another person from Pier Street said it's an old tin building that should have been torn down. Well, it's not, it's, it's all remodeled, okay? And it costs a lot of money to remodel this building. So those are my comments, and if you have anything else, I'd love to address them.
Okay, let's see. Do you have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I just have one question.
We'll ask you a few questions, and then we'll proceed.
Whatever you need, whatever you need, of course.
We'll comment afterward.
Yeah, so you have, you know, applied for some signs on the front side and on the restaurant side, and you have those some rooftop signs.
Two rooftop signs?
Right, yeah. Have you looked at the visibility of those signs from, you know, freeways and other areas? And is the rooftop sign is the best location, you think?
Oh, yes, but I did, I did agree with the city that twenty feet by ten feet, they were huge. They were huge. Those were definitely billboard size, okay? But I didn't just erect them because I had a whim, okay? That's what was approved on my prints.
I know, but, you know, if it is just like, you know, sign of your business and it is not a billboard.
You won't see it on the, if you can't put it low, because if you put it low, all the food trucks block it on the east side. And if you put it low on the west side, Union Pacific Row Road always has their trains there, and so that would block it on that side. So you wouldn't see, you wouldn't see the facility signage.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting putting on the face of the building, but on the lower roof, you know, where, and I'm also wondering, like, you know, can you use, you know, some of that signage to screen some of those mechanical equipment? You know, because screening those mechanical equipment is also, you know, condition of approval. So if you, you know, put those signs actually on the screens, then you can, you know, make a dual use of that.
Well, that sign, the screens, the screens that, if you want me to put the screens up, the screens were only going to be five feet tall. So there's no, and that's not going to give.
They would be as tall as the equipment.
Sorry.
They would be as tall as the equipment.
They would be blocking the equipment, but that's a, that's a whole new structural build-out I'd have to do to put up all the metal to be able to support. And then the sign, even if the sign, it doesn't fit the ordinance. If I do a sign that's twenty feet or thirty feet long, that's not going to fit the ordinance either. So if I put a small sign to block the equipment, then I got to put more metal to block the rest of the equipment, and it's not going to really get the visibility that it would on the roof. Taking them down thirty percent, forty percent from what they are up there, I mean, I am allowed rooftop signs, I believe.
I know, I'm just like trying, you know, trying to suggest some alternative which can work for you also, as well as the neighbors, you know, and so, you know, I'm just like highlighting possibilities and, you know, we are looking at.
I have no problem blocking all that equip- I don't think it's a good thing to do, but.
No, no, I'm, I'm not suggesting blocking, like, using the whole screening for signage, you know, you are going to screen anyway as a requirement. And so if you use part of that as your signage, then the rooftop sign could be like relocated to that location. And, you know, we are looking at, you know, street level, which is the Cleveland Avenue. But your main, you know, visibility, I think, is desired from the freeway. And freeway is like, I think, you know, fifteen feet higher than this, right? Can you go to the street view that shows this side from the freeway?
Well, below my height, and I can't help, I can't help the view from next door down into my property. I'm in a commercial area, they're residential, they've, they've wanted me to shut off all my light, they want me to go around with candles, okay? No.
I think we should stick to questions and answers right now. So I just want to.
It gets me a little bit upset, I apologize.
I just want to.
To some specific questions and.
I just want to clarify some statements. So the planning commission approved a, what did I say? Five by seven signage? I forget the original.
Nine by s- nine, twelve by five, and I think.
That was, that was never approved, it was never in writing.
No, it was not in writing, but it was, there were scant details on the signage that went to the planning commission back in twenty nineteen. However, it was specifically called out in the staff report that there was a signed design review. And the plans, the plans that of the planning commission that were approved had fifteen by seven. No.
That, that is the request.
Twelve by five.
Yeah, twelve by five was approved, and then fifteen by seven.
So all signage, as mentioned, rooftop signs are permissible in this district. However, all signage is subject to review and approval by the planning and zoning commission. And all signage, since we are, have opened this for review, are up on the table tonight. So the job tonight is to deliberate and decide signage that is appropriate. There are no overall limits on square footage, so just, I wanted to keep those facts in mind.
Okay.
Okay, do you have other questions?
I just wanted to see the view from the freeway, if it's possible to bring it up.
Well.
I don't know if it'll.
You can go back, just hit on that arrow, yeah, and then put your, you know, any little.
I think you will street view will give you that.
It does.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
As if you're standing on the freeway?
Yeah, you can see that now. You chose the wrong freeway.
Oh, sorry.
Select the one on the right side, there are all those blue lines.
You can see the Bay Shore sign to the right, just in that view you just had.
Yeah, there somewhere. Yeah, now you can spin.
To the right, if you could pan to the right.
So.
No, to the left, to the left, excuse me.
Yeah, so we are on the, you know, east side of the freeway now, and if it is the west side, the view might be even better. But I'm just trying to highlight, you know, an opportunity where, you know, the lower portion of the roof also could be a good location for the sign.
I understand that, but Bay Shore sign is taller. I was trying to show you, it's taller and it's, and it's bigger.
So we're focusing on your property.
Why don't you tell me to reduce my sign, call Bay Shore and have them reduce theirs.
Okay, well, that's not under discussion tonight, so let's.
That's the thought process here, you know?
Well, we're here to review your proposal and.
All right.
These specifics for your project.
Thank you.
I'm not reviewing, we're not reviewing the next-door neighbor's properties.
Okay.
Any kind, specifically your project, so, thank you. All right, well, I would like to keep this moving. So if we have specific questions that can be easily answered, I'd like to do it. It's not a question of redesigning his signs, I don't think, right now. I think we're taking them at face value, the proposal on the roof, upper roof, and the size as proposed in the plan here. Any other questions or? No, Commissioner Piltch, any questions? Well, I just had a question about the hours of operations for the eating area, the covered patio. Is that something that makes sense to you to have it nine o'clock as an ending time?
No, I put it into the request when we sent it in. We want to make our hours Tuesday through Sunday, ten AM until ten PM.
That would be, I mean, we're allowing you to do more than that.
Yeah, but we don't want, the barbecue's going to take prep and a lot of other work, and we don't want to work our tail off, we want to just get through it.
Well, most restaurants around Albany shut down around nine thirty.
You're kind of getting into the weeds here.
Yeah, no, but I'm just asking about the hours of operations.
The event center upstairs, I'd love to discuss that.
Of approval for the, the covered seating area, would you prefer that to be ten PM to match your other hours of operations or?
Ten to ten, ten AM till ten PM, Tuesday through Sunday.
And you'd like that to apply to the mezzanine?
No, the mezzanine inside.
Not mezzanine, to the outdoor seating area as well.
That's the outside, yes, sir.
You know, I'd be very happy to allow ten PM for the outdoor seating area. Do you have any?
No, I just want to keep this to questions.
Okay, all right, 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 okay. That was just what your preferred hours would be, fine with me. Okay, that really is it.
The mezzanine?
And then what do you view as the, using, how do you envision using the mezzanine?
Well, the city has now asked me to put an elevator in, so now I got to do that to access the second floor. The second floor is actually going to be used mostly for events, you know, birthday party, et cetera. So that's what the second floor is going to be used for. I think the ten to ten on, on the mezzanine also works fine.
So I'm going to interrupt right there to say that the use approved was for conference room office, and when it went through building permit, it was reduced to office use. And so if there is a request for event use there, that would need to come back on a separately noticed public hearing to change the use.
For events?
For events.
Okay.
On, in the mezzanine, because right now it's office. And so when I look at the hours for office use, I'm looking at what would be appropriate for hours for office, which is not till ten PM. So if you want to do, expand the uses, that, that could be a separate application, and we can move forward. But that is not subject tonight because we haven't.
All right. Could I ask you a question? Could we do special usage event licensing? Where we're doing an event and we get a license from the ABC, we get a license from you for that event, for that, for that date? It's not a daily thing.
At this point, as conditioned, it would be allowable events in the restaurant area and the outdoor patio area.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be a separate use permit, separate application.
That's fine.
There would be perhaps separate fire marshal requirements, separate other conditions.
I understand.
Might have to comply.
I understand.
Okay.
We'll go through the process, thank you.
Okay, so I think that is it for questions for right now. And if you could have a seat, then we're going to take public comment.
Sure, sure, sure.
Right, thank you for speaking with us. So I would like to move on to public comment. And do we have an idea of how many people are going to speak online or?
Excuse me, online, I have three hands up. If anyone else wishes to speak, we have four hands up on this item. If you can use the raise the hand icon so we can get an idea of how long. So currently, we have four online.
Okay, well, we'll allow three minutes per speaker. Each person has three minutes, and come and state your name and or not, if you don't want to, and state your business, and tell us what your comments are about this project.
First of all, we just, okay. I'm just asking that you guys follow what the staff has recommended, particularly when it comes to not the size of the signs, but lights on the signs. It wasn't discussed that much here, but it is in, in the paperwork that went out with the staff recommended, which was no lights on the upper signs. Okay, so I'm just addressing that. So I'm asking that you do that, which is not approved lights on the signs. Signs are distracting and interrupt our lives and sleep. Even with hoods covering direct light exposure, the signs themselves are like glaring billboards. This defeats the purpose of dampening the glare that would, and would continue to disturb the hundreds of owners on Pier Street with this cumulative light pollution. There's already lights around, you add more lights, it's more lights. Yes, it's fine to have signs, we just ask, our neighbors ask, that they're not lighted roof signs. We live in anxiety of how to function with this ongoing light pollution. We ask ourselves, will we be forced to move if this is approved? Or how this will affect our property values? So we hope you agree with recommendations by the staff, and no lights on the roofs. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm on Pier Street, directly facing.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you very much.
Tired. Okay. Hi, I'm the wife. I too live on Pierce Street. We also are, we want to thank Leslie and the staff for recommending no lights on the roof. We hope that you agree with that and approve that tonight so that our quality of life can return and that we can live and sleep without worry of future light pollution problems and all the stress and anxiety it has evoked, especially over the last year and a half. But it's been five years since this business has been there. Also, on the second floor of the building where we're asking for, that building was blacked out for decades, but the new ownership removed it, put in new windows, and now we have bright fluorescent lights that also beam out and invade our evening as well. Can you see the actual top of it? I don't know, because it's so bright. I haven't bothered to take a picture, but it beams out. I don't know if what Leslie is recommending, a film, will be enough. So, Mr. Glass has recommended, had suggested doing a photometric study, or whatever you want to call it, perhaps to tell us what needs to be done there to make the light pollution livable so he can run his business and we can have our lives. So, okay, so that's it. And so, also, we can hear music from Golden Gate Fields whenever there's outside events. I don't think we'll hear music from his, you know, property, from restaurants or whatever, but we just want to make sure that it's not at a decibel level that's so loud as Golden Gate Fields, so, and to not have it after 9:00 p.m., but 24/7, so he's limited to a certain level of music. As far as his parking, et cetera, he hasn't been in compliance three times. I know the city has worked with him to get him into compliance, I understand. He's a businessman, it probably isn't a big deal to him, but to us, it is. And the first time was last July, where his parking lots came into our homes, then he, then he put them down, then he gets shields, shields on them. It took a couple of weeks. Then in April, he put up his signs with lights that came right into our homes. It was worse. I came home from a surgery, I thought I was going crazy trying to get him to, get the city to get him to shut them down. Took almost two months. We had to come to the city council for them to get his lights shut down off of his signs. Then again, in late August, September, he put new lighting in the north parking lot. Again, big lights coming into us and lights on the trucks coming into our homes. So, I want him to understand, we want him to succeed, we hope his business and his restaurant succeed, but to understand the impact that these lights are having on us. We're not complaining about views. I can see the view, what I can see first are horrific lights coming into us. So, I don't know how we resolve this. I know Leslie is really trying her best to make that happen, but I'm asking you to consider it for right now, to not like the signs. I'm begging you, please, don't do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak? Then we can move to online comments?
Could I redo this?
No, not right now, no. We're gonna hear from the public and then, you know, we'll, we'll see, we'll...
Oops, Arlie, three minutes.
Hi, this is Orelli from Bridgewater, and I'd like to support the other homeowners that have spoken. Just to give a little background, with this project, it took many months and many meetings before the commission even approved a conditional approval for this project. This was back in 2019. At the very end of that approval, it was leaving it almost to the city council to decide it, but they decided instead to give conditional approvals. It took four years for that business to get up and running. In that time, those lights, those billboards, truly, I want you to understand that it's a Wednesday night, 9:00 p.m., kids are, I'm trying to get kids to bed, and this is really affecting our lives. We're a family-based, we're, we're a family condominium. We have these lights that come into our spaces and completely change the quality of life, and I really want to impart how much it is affecting not just us, but our children. And we'd like for the current proposal to be denied and for consideration of Commissioner Momon's request, because I think it's the dual purpose of moving that signage to facilitate the business's desires, but moving it to a space where it doesn't affect the line of vision for the people being, who are living there, would be a better way of balancing the needs here. And I just want to bring up that a lot of the problems that are coming up are because the owner is trying to do too many things with that space. There are, there are trucks, there's catering, there's events wanting to be hosted, there's a restaurant, there's an apartment space. It's just, it's a bit too much. It's, it's unraveling to some extent. With regards to the, the food restaurant, I mean, I'm asking for that to be denied. Particular issue with, with the initial thing that was permit was the scent, which the vents, which are visible to us, the vents were supposed to take care of the scents. Well, now, he's proposing cooking the barbecue outside. The bay breeze, we're a corridor, a corridor for the bay breeze coming straight through. We have 700 units spread across three condominiums. We're all gonna get hit with that barbecue that we don't want to smell. Because of those considerations, we're strongly asking for you to reconsider even conditionally approving these, because we've had, in order to get to this point, to get our, our concerns addressed, it takes months. I, I can just, I hope that you also consider the staff's requests that, or consider the staff's concerns, because we do contact them, we contact Mr. Bond, and this is a real concern of ours. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next, please.
Hi, my name, sorry, hi, my name is Linneev Kamarami. I live at Pierce Street. It's the lights for me that are, have been really problematic, and specifically with the billboard signage lights. I'm not opposed to the signs themselves, but the light that, when he did have the, the signs up for a period, the lights reflecting off of the sign itself was incredibly bright. I don't know what kind of material or what have you, but truly, the inside of my apartment glowed, it, it was almost as if it were a digital billboard. That's how bright it was, and even closing my shades, the glow would come through the shades. So, I've appreciated the fact that the business owner did listen to our requests and, and in the parking area, put hoods on those lights, cast the light downward, that has made a really big difference. It's been, you know, I can see that his parking lot is illuminated, but it's not shining into our units anymore. But the, the billboard sign, I'm really concerned about allowing those signs to be lit, and would ask that the commission follow the staff's recommendation, that there are no lights on those billboard signs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello. Hi, I'm, I'm a resident on, on Pierce Street as well. I just wanted to make the, the commission aware that we have a concern with the, with this, with the signage for this, for this business. You know, I looked back at, you know, earlier this year, the, the really large billboards were put up, and I looked back at the 2019 planning and, you know, in the drawings that were submitted, there's, there's, there's just no way you look at the drawings, and it's a 20 by 10 billboard. So, I feel like this business owner is a little bit, not really concerned with the, the rules or the laws that, the conditions that the city is imposing, and kind of just does whatever. But, you know, in any case, I, I, I don't know if the commissioners are aware, but on that street, the businesses that are, that are across, you know, that are across from the, the condominiums, it's Bay Shore Supply, it's El Cerrito Tires, it's the City of Albany Works, Albany Steel, Albany Hardwood, and API. All of those, none of those businesses have rooftop signage or billboard signage. So, contrary to what the, the business owner was, was mentioning, none, none of those signages are as bright or as big as what the billboards were that were put up, that, you know, that were, that were not part of the planning and were put up and took a long time to, to bring down. So, I feel like, I, I urge the commission to, to, to take, to take our concerns seriously and, and also consider that this business owner has, has acted with impunity in the past and, you know, recommend a signage that's more in line with the other businesses, the existing businesses on that stretch of Cleveland Ave. I think someone earlier mentioned that even the Caltrans signs are not lit up. One, one thing that could be proposed is that the signage be, instead of, instead of it's lit from the bottom up, lit from the top down, because how the signs were, were put up, they were lit with, with spotlights angling upwards, so that's, you know, the, the light was kind of spilling upwards. Thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Mugi. I live on Pierce Street. I share the same concern as the other homeowners, the residents on the street. My concerns are the light, I request that the light, the sign be brought down to the building level, because it's, even if, if you, so if you make it bigger, now it's, it's very hard, but if you make it bigger, it would only make our lives even harder. And I also share the concern of smoke smell from the outside cooking. I'm sure you guys have been to outside barbecue and smokehouse places, and that smell can be really, really strong, and with the wind from the bay, it will only go our direction. It's not gonna go to the bay. So, I, I request the lights, I, I don't think I have problem with the lights being lit if it is brought down to the level of the building. And I am very opposed, strongly opposed to the outside cooking with no venting, because it's not only a few residents, it's 700 units across two condos, I mean, three condos. And there's all, even single-family houses along the streets too. Thank you, that's all.
All right, thank you for your comments. More?
Three more.
Hi, my name is Trin, and I am a resident also on 545 Pierce Street. I just wanted to lend my support to my neighbors who are living on this street and again, express the concern about the signage and the light. Light pollution is a, is a huge concern for me, being a resident here. We already have a lot of light pollution from some of the signs around, you know, the businesses that are nearby. And then, so adding a sign on top of the roof will dramatically lower the quality of life for the many residents that live here. And I also want to echo, like you said, we are on the bay, and there is a huge concern for me also, one of the commissioners mentioned, for wildlife that, you know, are here and how that's gonna be impacted. So, I appreciate that you guys are looking at these concerns and respectfully ask that you do not allow the signage above the building height. Additionally, again, to support the, you know, smell of barbecue. While I enjoy barbecue, I do not want to smell barbecue all day long, and I do not want to smell barbecue inside my apartment. And if there's any cooking that's happening, that proper vents or precautions are taken so that, you know, we're not getting the side impact of, of the business. And, you know, I support the business, I want the owner to succeed, but not at the expense of people who have to live here, you know, 24/7. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, I am, but I wondered if you might be able to read the email that I sent to you? Perhaps you could just read it into the record?
Yes, but I will, you would like me to read it into the record?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna have to locate it, so I will let the next person speak first while I look for it.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll wait for Mira to do the button, so I will find the email.
Wait to the end of this. Okay, that's okay. Hello, my name's Kevin Smith, and I'm an owner of a condo over on Pierce Street. I, I share many of the concerns, but I guess a couple of concerns I have is, one, there are many more studies now coming out showing the impact on migratory birds during night flights from city lights. And so, I don't know if I've heard much from the city managers or the planning managers about environmental impacts of intense light. So, that's one thing I would like to hear more about. The other thing is, I don't mind signs, you know? Signs can be very artistic, very creative, but the signs that are on that roof are just, remind me of World War II probing lights, looking for jets in the air. They're just very white, washout-looking signs. They, they show a lot of light, a lot of intense white light. So, I would like some consideration, at least from the design perspective, is there any other softer lights, neon lights that could be used that are much softer, less impactful on wildlife, people who live in the Pierce Street area, that might be softer? And why not just also look at not having a rooftop light? Why not just on the side walls rather than on the rooftop? I understand the economic feasibility of having a big, white, flashing light that reaches all the drivers on 580 and 80 coming down the freeway, that's, that's a real marketing perspective, but I agree with many of the other tenants and people who've spoken that there are lives who are affected by this light, and I would like some more consideration by the managers to look in to the variations of types of lights that you can use that are just as effective, and also the, the impact on the wildlife. You know, like most restaurants, they don't have these big, flat, flashing white lights. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you for your comments.
All right, I'm gonna read the email from Joel Karp. Yes, please. We wish the owners of Chef's Touch Kitchen every success in their recently established business. However, we, owners of apartments in the Gateview condominium, are concerned about the installing of 15-foot by 7-foot rooftop signs. We note that the neighboring businesses, El Cerrito Tire and Autobody to the north and Bay Shore Supply to the south, have no rooftop signs, yet their parking lots are always full and their businesses seem to be thriving. Apparently, they are benefiting from their word-of-mouth reputations in advertising and other media. Few, if any, food trucks travel on Highway 80 and 580 to even see the signs. We would urge the owners of Chef's Touch Kitchen to do as their neighbors do, namely, rely more on word-of-mouth and advertising online and in other media. Installing these large signs only adds to visual pollution, diminishes our valued bay views, and decreases our property value. Thank you for your consideration, Joel Karp and other Gateview residents. And with that, if there is anyone else wishing to speak on this item, please use the raise the hand icon. And that is it.
Okay, thank everyone for their comments. We're gonna close public comment and move on to commissioner deliberations. And I would just take a moment to note that we also did receive a lot of letters essentially saying the same things, lighting, signage, mostly lighting and signage. So we're not gonna take any more comment. It's not a discussion anymore. We are gonna discuss it amongst ourselves and make a decision about how to proceed. So would anyone like to start off? Commissioner Pils?
Can I just state one thing?
Do you have another?
I just want to clarify that per our, our lighting, exterior lighting performance standards, it specifically says that no exterior lighting may be over 16 feet in height. And so why I believe that, that if there was an internally illuminated sign, that would be appropriate if it were on the roof or otherwise over six feet. What is being proposed here are externally illuminated signs. And to me, that does not, any lighting over 16 feet is not permissible for our code. So as you, consider your deliberations, I want you to consider that in, in staff's opinion, having the exterior lighting on the roof is actually not on the table.
And I think one of the conditions prohibit lighting the signs on the roof, right? Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that, that point. Anybody like to start? Nick?
Sure. June, or would you like to start? Okay, great. First of all, I want to make sure I thank staff for the, all the work that's gone into working with the owner and the neighbors. And they're coming up with these conditions of approval, which I'm going to ask my colleagues to just go ahead and approve tonight and not spend too much more time with. And I would also ask the neighbors and the applicant to be respectful of each other. I don't think it's appropriate for the neighbors to assume motivations from the business owner, nor the business owner to assume motivations from the neighbors such as they want you to go around with candles. I'd ask my colleagues to be brief and concise with their comments tonight. Note that we're already 2.5 hours in and we still have one very, another very substantial item on this. So with that, I'll try to be very brief. This is a business located in a business district, first of all. I suggest we let the business owner do business as they see fit within our, within our standards, within our code. I'm fine with the signage as it, as it is unilluminated. If we want to work out something else with internal illumination, that will come down the pike. And I agree with staff that external illumination of the sign is not within our code right now. We have plenty of lighting, lighted buildings around. So we're gonna expect any, any lighted buildings to, at night, to be visible from afar, including all of our residences, including the condos. So we need to be very specific about what the lighting problems are. I believe that the neighbors do have issues with the lighting. But I cannot, I am not a resident. I cannot exactly see the lighting. So I'm having a little bit of a problem with exactly the remedies that we need to bring forward. It would be best if we had an expert, a lighting expert evaluated and we had a data-driven analysis. If we had someone who could actually, you know, tell us how many lumens are actually being emitted and in what direction, that would be the best, I think, to deal with it. Barring that, I think, you know, it sounds like the owner has already done some things. The staff has proposed some conditions of approval. I say we go forward with these, with what staff, with the owner's already done and what staff has proposed, and iterate and go from there. One thing about lighting, occupancy sensors, I don't know if they're part of commercial code, but maybe staff, maybe, let me pause and ask a question of staff. Are, are internal occupancy sensors required in a commercial building that only, that will turn the lights on only when someone enters a, a room?
Internally, you mean?
Yeah.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. So we have occupancy sensors that could then help with shutting off internal lighting when it's not being used and therefore reduce lighting. I know that that can be used externally as well. I do have to drive unfortunately to work right now. In the parking garage that I go into, lights up as I enter. And lights are not, not all the lights are on if I'm, if no one is actually in there. So something to consider. I know that lights have to be on externally for safety and for, for theft deterrents. So, but if we can, if, if a, if there is some treatment like that where lights can only go on when a truck comes in, you know, something, something to be, something to consider. I don't care about screening the rooftop equipment as it's been pointed out, that's only gonna matter for people on the street and on the freeway. They, they don't care. And it's not gonna matter for the people in the building. So I think screening should be off the table. I'm glad that the building was reused and not torn down. That's actually a really good thing. And finally, in terms of the smell of the barbecue, if there's already cooking going on in the building and it's being vented, it's being vented to the outside, barbecue will be outside. If there's not a problem already, I don't, I don't think we need to address a problem that we don't know even exists. If a problem does come up, we can address it if it does. So once again, I'll reiterate that I'll ask my colleagues to just approve what staff has done. And we can always come back with more refinements. But I ask that my fellow commissioners don't try to do much more refining at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Moaman, comments?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I acknowledge this is an industrial establishment, an industrial zone. It complies with all the zoning requirements. We need businesses to operate in the city. So there are some things that have to be accepted as they are. I agree that noise is not a major issue since the site is, the neighborhood, residential neighborhood on the east side is separated by a major freeway. But I think the light pollution is an issue here. And I really appreciate what staff has been doing, you know, to mitigate that. You know, you have been working with the residents and the owner and all that, and already have taken steps to reduce that, which is, I think, really commendable. And I think the conditions of approval that you have put together would be really effective in dealing with the light pollution issue. So I agree with Commissioner Pils that all the conditions of approval are really, you know, useful. And I agree with all of them. And I support their approval. In addition to that, I really recommend getting a lighting plan designed by a lighting engineer or designer with proper photometric study, a proper choice of lighting fixtures and lighting controls that would look into all these, you know, unnecessary lighting. And that would, you know, resolve a lot of problems. And in addition to that, you know, in the same lighting plan, you could also look at the, you know, impact of lighting on the wildlife. Because, you know, you are so close to the bay, it, it has some impact on the wildlife. And then, city has also proposed a follow-up inspection, which is a good idea. And then the condition of approval 17, which is a permit review as needed in future. I think it's a additional safeguard for the residents, you know, that I think is a big assurance for the neighbors. If things don't go, you know, in the right way, they always have recourse to that condition. So that, that I think is an important aspect of the conditions of approval. And then regarding the signage, I recognize that this is an industrial area, you know, and then things can be unsightly. I would recommend the rooftop sign be placed on the lower roof. You can take a, you know, do a survey of visibility sightlines and see if it, if works there, that could also, I'm just suggesting, is not a condition. But that could also minimize some impact and, you know, it could also sway some of your neighbors. And then screening of mechanical equipment, you know, is a requirement by the city. So, you know, I would not comment on that. Yeah. So other than that, you know, I'm in support of your proposal for the restaurant and the outdoor dining, you know, some activity in that area is, I think, useful. That Cleveland Street is always kind of, you know, empty. So having some footfall there during the day would be good, you know. So I support that. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. I'll just add, yeah, this is a mixed-use, commercial mixed-use property. It's an entirely appropriate use for this property, I think. You know, in many ways, it's a really interesting business model. It's really supporting a lot of other small businesses. It has a knock-on economic effect. I think it's a really good business for the food trucks. And it's, if it's done in an environmental and sustainable way, it's really providing a valuable service and, you know, keeping things cleaner out in the streets and, you know, collecting the grease, all those good things. And it is a 24/7 business with the food trucks. So there is that use of people coming into the commissary kitchen and you need the lighting indoors. I get that. And we don't want to block the windows because that provides daylight during the day. It's, you know, creates a better indoor work environment, healthier, safer, uses less energy. We're not gonna black them out. No question about that. I mean, there was one, I had one thought, there could be interior blinds on the upper windows that could be automated or automatic. I mean, I think that could be something that a lighting consultant could look into. It could be retractable, you know, with the push of a button. That could reduce the nighttime, you know, light going up towards the hills. You wouldn't need it on the bayside, I don't think, just mostly on the hillside. A lighting consultant could, I'm sure, come up with some proposals for that. And I would suggest that we change the hours for the mezzanine, not mezzanine, outdoor patio to be 10:00 PM to match his other business time for the restaurant. I mean, we just approved a outdoor seating area on San Pablo and that was allowed to go to 10:00 PM, if I recall, just the one we saw about a couple months ago. So I don't think that's anything out of the ordinary. So I, I would say we should allow the, the commissioners agree, allow the outdoor seating area to be used until 10:00 PM. Thing is, you know, just make it align with his hours of operation, the restaurant. So that goes beyond what staff is? Yeah, staff has said nine. I would change it to 10. And same with lights out, 10:00 PM. Just sort of make it uniform, 10:00 PM. And then as far as the size of the sign, I think we're fine at 15 by seven. And I don't have a problem with it really on the upper roof. That's why it's visible from both freeways. And I completely support no lights on it. The other question was the patio covering, which is coming to us after the fact, having been built, which we were, we've been in this situation before. And I thought you had learned your lesson for that. You're supposed to come to us first. You'll have to go through the building inspection aspect of it all. But it is a relatively benign structure. I don't really see it having an impact. Well, okay, that's why, you know, that's gonna be between you and the building department. Might you make a comment about the lighting on the sign real quick? Okay, well, yeah. Okay, one quick comment. Originally on the prints, it showed for five up lights each direction on each sign. Well, a lot of it was the sign gigantic. Okay, that was a lot of lighting. I'm willing to take it down to like two lights and then buffer the lights and also put it on a motion detector piece. It doesn't need to be on, you know, past dusk. So those are ideas. Okay. Well, I don't think we're gonna allow lights on the sign up on the roof. I was here when we approved your project before. And I do remember there were some small signs on the plans. There was no lighting plan. That was or not, I don't remember any lighting or any electrical plan that I saw. This was a planning approval. Okay. Okay, fair enough. And so other than that, I'm happy to approve the conditions as...
Okay, I have a question for staff.
Written by staff.
Okay, I have a question for staff. The screening conditions that you came up with, are those just reiterations of our current code or?
Correct. So
Gotcha.
what we could do is say screen per current code in case the code changes.
Okay, yeah, that, I think that's fine. I, I don't think the screening is necessary at all. But if it's in our current code, it's in our current code. Then you wanted to, can you tell me where you wanted to change the hours?
It was hours of operation, item 18, outdoor patio, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. I would change that to 10:00 PM.
Gotcha. All right.
And associated lights off half hour after and before.
Right. There are a few other sections where, I mean, if we just coordinated to 10, which would be similar to what we've done recently, other outdoor eating areas.
So you want all references to nine to be 10?
Yes, for the outdoor patio.
The outdoor patio.
Twenty-two could be outdoor patio, this is lights 10:00 PM. And I would also mention that, you know, we don't regulate the kind of restaurant. So what they do, how they cook, it's not really our purview to control that or make changes to that. That's their business. And we hope it's a successful.
Did we want to put in a, oh, sorry.
There have been lots of other, there have been other, lots of other barbecue restaurants.
Do we, do we want to put in a condition about the lighting designer?
I think so.
Okay. So we require a lighting expert or, I don't know how, I'm not sure how to phrase it.
Lighting designer.
Lighting designer.
Designer.
Require that the applicant retain a lighting designer for all, to evaluate all lighting?
Yeah.
Exterior lighting, that's right.
Exterior, but also I think the lights that are in the upper
Yeah.
story lights, I think that's what a lot of residents
Plus those, yeah.
react to, is that upper strip of lights that's very bright towards the hillside. And in that respect, I would suggest that look at some sort of blinds, interior blinds that can be opened and closed.
Right.
Do I have a question about the, the requirement? When would you want that study done?
The lighting study or?
Prior to certificate of occupancy or?
Yeah, what are we, what are we asking exactly? A study or just that the lighting designer be retained?
It would be a plan that would be
Plan.
used as for construction.
Okay.
And that would be inspected post-construction.
So the plan, the plan before a significant certificate of occupancy?
Right. Because that would, you know, impact their electrical design, all the construction, you know, their installation of the light fixtures, you know, poles and all that. That would be based on that.
Great, okay.
We have a motion.
Can I, before you?
Sorry, one point I was mentioning is the light that are visible through the clear story, those are supposed to be turned off by 9:00 PM. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's only in the mezzanine, not in the main work area.
Exactly. And there are clear story from the main work area as well.
A bit more lighting along the main work area, which he is perfectly, he needs the light there. He needs the daylight during the day. So we're not gonna black them out. Once, they should not be blacked out from the outside. That's not gonna be an option.
Before a motion is made, I had a recommendation for a revised condition, which is to allow flexibility for the rooftop signage to either be the two rooftop signs as, as proposed at 15 by seven, they're double sided on the top ridge, or to allow two rooftop signs at the lower level on each side at that, so it'd be four total, but they would be on the lower roof. So you would, if this were approved, to leave it to the option of the applicant since it wasn't really discussed. But it would allow the ability to, for the applicants to still have the double sided by having twice as much signage, but would lower the signs. And so
On the lower roof, you mean, when you say lower?
Low, pardon? Low, pardon?
On the lower roof.
On the lower roof. So there could be two facing east and two facing west, not be above the high ridge, but would still be visible on both sides to folks passing on the highway or on the...
Yeah.
My, my highest...
Right. So if there were a condition that allowed that flexibility, so there could be some negotiations and thought if that would be more appropriate.
And now, those would be lighted or unlighted?
Unlighted. All of it's unlighted, because it's all above 16 feet.
Okay. Well, that gives you options.
I would support that.
Yeah. Is that good? Okay.
Four more days of welding and brackets and put up four signs when I'm not out of code upstairs, I'm like two seconds.
So this is...
This is your option.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Option, not requirement.
So I think I have a, I think I can propose something.
Okay.
I would like to move that we, hmm, let's see, what, what am I actually moving? Let me make sure that, what staff wants me to, recommendation, okay. We review, approve the proposed project subject to attached findings and conditioned approval. And this is a project, this is application 24-035. Okay, so we're approving, approving the, approving the proposed project. I guess we're approving it again, but, or, we just...
You're approving the revised project.
Approving the, okay, approving the revised project, thank you. With additional conditions, where did I, just wrote it down, to increase patio hours to 10:00 PM, that the applicant must produce a lighting plan for exterior lighting, but also including the interior lighting in the upper window area, and, and option, and including staff's recommendation for an option for signage placements either for lower or the two original as proposed upper.
And modifying the condition regarding mechanical screening, that it applies with code?
And that too. Perfect. Okay, that's my motion.
Photometric study, in the, photometric study to be included along with the lighting plan.
Oh, okay. Study as well?
Photometric study, so they would, you know, design actual, you know, light requirement across the site where it is, you know, necessary and where it is not.
Okay. So that, that's required for the plan then anyway, or?
That could be part of the lighting plan.
I have that, but...
You have, you have that?
That's all good design.
Okay. Okay.
But make sure that we hire somebody to address it, okay, so we don't miss...
We can modify the condition regarding the lighting study to include the photometric...
Lighting plan to include, must include a photometric study. Got it. Yeah, that's, that sounds good to me. Okay.
Did I get everything?
I think so.
Okay. Great. Any second?
I second.
All right.
Have a vote. Let's vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Vote yes as well?
Yes.
That has been approved, and we wish you success, and good relations with the neighbors.
I have a good evening, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Excuse me.
So I'm gonna...
Can I, can we take a five-minute break?
Yes.
And then we would need, per your instructions earlier, to...
Correct. So our, I actually read our agenda, and we're not supposed to take up a new item after 9:30, but we can if it is, if there is the desire of the commission, you would have a, why don't we have a vote to continue, to move it on? Because if we're voting to continue it to the next meeting, we should just...
How long, I mean, I'm fading a little bit.
Correct. So I think we could do this in five minutes, however, if you want a lot of discussion, I would rather have fully energized commissioners.
I think we are gonna, there's, some of us are gonna propose changes, so I move that we move this, the last item to the next meeting.
I was anticipating there would not be a major discussion, because, you know, it was the same people in the last meeting, and I don't know, unless we have changed our minds, and so I don't know whether that would, you know, end a longer discussion, but if it is going to be shorter...
I was gonna propose some changes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting a little tired.
No problem.
Right.
Okay.
You can second my motion if you'd like.
You'll second your motion.
Okay. And you can call for a vote?
Please vote, Mr. Pils.
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. We will table that till the next meeting.
Now, you can take a ten-minute break.
Well, do we have any other items, or?
Yes, just the closing items.
Then we can just close it.
We can do it really quickly.
Okay. So new business? Any new business? Item eight, item 7.3, we're moving to the next meeting, continuing item eight. Any new business?
No. Just encourage you all to reapply, and I really admire your work here tonight especially, but every night, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And next meeting, January 8th?
Correct. And that will...
2024.
Provided we have a quorum, that will occur.
Okay. And with that, I will call this meeting adjourned.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.